All right, it's seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks very well for being here. Has there, anybody asked to speak today?
There were no requests to speak, see.
We move on to matters of the board. Going to get a motion to approve the regular board meeting, the May twelve twenty twenty five, the executive session on May twelve twenty five, twenty five, and the executive session of June fourth for twenty twenty five, and commencement May thirty first twenty twenty five.
And then will we approve the minutes of the meetings previously stated?
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Onto Mr. Claims, Mr. Day.
Uh, yes, in your packet are the regular payroll and a construction claim, wrapping up the high school auditorium project. And just a little bit left on that, ballots to finish, happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments, going to get a motion to approve the claims document as presented?
I agree with you, approve the claims as presented.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Onto old and unfinished business, financial matters.
Uh, yeah, after the novel I wrote last month, I thought I'd keep this one here for you. Really, nothing's changed since the last conversation we had, we'll continue to do what we're doing. Keep an eye on that state budget as our A D M comes in. I would like to take this opportunity to say that we're, we're not two years into the Comp Patrol conversion. If you remember, we went from something that looked like nineteen eighties pong on a screen to a web-based system. Um, and the business office team, Amy Bishop, Amber Ford, Leah Banter continues to really max out the capabilities of that program. They're adding a lot of great value there, we're going to roll out Comp Patrol to the buildings. So, we're actually going to be able to, to have a connection to the building level treasurers through that system. Um, and we're actually going to get rid of the old triplicate carbon copy P O system and move to an electronic requisition system. So, um, and that's just something that's, that's available to us in this new system that wasn't in the old and, and they've really kind of taken that bull by the horns. Um, on, for example, on accounts payable, we're, we're down to writing maybe a third of the checks we used to. We're using a lot more electronic payments, um, our vendors like it, we like it. A lot less, you know, stuff going out in the mail, a lot less chance for fraud. So, so they've done a really outstanding job and I just want to make sure that they were committed for it. Happy to answer your questions you have about the financial reports, but like I said, they're very similar to what we talked about last month.
Mr. Day, if you would add a little bit about the curriculum materials this year, which is a little unique for.
Oh, sure, uh, we talked about this a little bit last month, but yes, i- it is unique. Um, if you look on page two or three, the estimated education fund, I have added a curricular resource expense line item and I've added a curricular resource, um, revenue line item. This is a year where we adopted English curriculum for K through eight. Yeah, K through eight, um, it's expensive. In the past, we would have, we would have put that into our curricular resource or what we used to call the textbook rental fund, uh, Fund nine hundred and pay that back over a series of years, um, through textbook fees and money from the state. Now, we, we're buying this all upfront and we're not getting that amount of revenue from the state. As you can see, we're projected to get about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue from the state to offset a million dollar expenditure. So, we're going to have to carry that through cash balance and in our education fund and hopefully make it up in the years where we don't adopt. Um, that's going to probably change the cadence of how we do adoptions. We'll probably spend a little bit longer using curriculum than we have in the past. Um, and we're going to have to be smart about the, you know, what we're buying and how we're buying it and the programs we're using.
Thank you.
Is there any assistance we might have, for instance, it was state approved or referring it? I can tell by your spots the answer, great question, but no.
No, no, there, there really wasn't, um, you, you know, the, the hope is that, you know, having a state-approved list of curriculum that we can slow down our vetting process, or, or, sorry, minimize our vetting process, which isn't necessarily expensive to us other than time. Um, you know, and hopefully by having some, some publicly known chosen vendors that are approved across the state, those people know that they're competing and that they're going to sharpen their pencil and, and, and we do that already. You know, we, we push back, we talk about, you know, some of the things that, you know, sometimes in the past they included and they're not including this time, they would charge us for, so we push back on that. Or we talk about the number of, of classroom sets we buy and, you know, we're always looking to, to squeeze that number as much as we can. The reality is, is, is even if you short out the vetting process, it's still important to, to get your teachers, your administrators, the people who are going to be implementing that curriculum in and talking about it. And then we also, also have the public viewing period, that's thirty, forty-five days where we have to have it available. So, it, there's not a lot of room to cut out of it, but, you know, hopefully that'd be the only thing. The fact that it's state-approved, oh, we've had state-approved other things, um, as you may know, that the state loves to do unfunded mandates and this has got to be one of them.
Anything else? Alright, we'll move on to, um, instruction report, Mr.
Got a hodgepodge of, of items in the instructional report and I'm going to ask Mr. Marine to, to start with celebration there.
Round two of three I, I read administrations occurred beginning on May twelfth. So, we had an additional fourteen third graders pass that line and forty-two second graders pass that line. So, um, we are currently sitting at probably the all-time highest we've ever had those, uh, results right now.
Ending the school year definitely, now we'll see where we're at after the, the summer school.
We have summer school going on currently right now, uh, and we'll have the remaining third graders will, uh, they'll take the, the, their third try at the test at the end of, uh, this week, actually, so.
How many are left, how many are graders?
Uh, we have twenty-six.
Good deal.
Very, very happy about those results right now. Uh, the next piece was I learn, we also, uh, our students in three, grades three through eight, uh, participated in, uh, I learn starting on, in April. Those results are, are out now, not for public knowledge yet, but, um, our students have their individual scores. So, we are looking at those for strengths and weaknesses and we'll continue to evaluate those. Uh, we have already identified some initial, uh, areas that we want to improve upon. We should have more on, on those results in July, in I read. Uh, third piece was just the, um, announcement of our e-learning days for next school year. Uh, I think these are corresponding dates from this school year, so September ninth, November fourth, and April seventh. Uh, we've found that spreading those out throughout the school year helps us with, uh, some trainings and P Ds. So, uh, we're just, um, planning on having those e-learning days for next year, well, three, three days. And, uh, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five school start times. Uh, since we are changing, uh, our fourth graders are remaining in the elementary schools next school year. We, uh, Mr. Gray, our transportation director, wanted to look at maximizing our bus routes, being more efficient with some students as we transport students around the district. So, uh, we made some small tweaks to some start times and it's really just like a ten or fifteen minute start time where we've shifted one school and backed down another school so that we don't have, you know, two hundred and fifty students waiting on a bus where we could just transport one hundred students to make that more efficient. So, um, we are making those tweaks to start next year.
She had those four specific times next month, but again, the whole idea is to have kids waiting a less amount of time on buses or at a school to be picked up.
Right, sense. And the last one was the human sexuality curriculum. Can you speak on that?
I'll actually ask Ms. Claire to speak to that one.
Yay. Sounds awesome. Uh, there was some new law that passed, um, that's requiring some change in the teaching of human sexuality. In your report, I outlined some of those changes. One of the biggest changes that this, this board has to approve all materials in curriculum that will be taught in human sexuality. We do that, um, in fifth, uh, fifth grade through twelfth grade. Um, we do invite a company in to help us with that, it's Health Ed Pros in fifth and sixth grade. Um, and then it is life choices for our, uh, eighth grade and then our, uh, high school kids. So, um, in your packets and in your materials, you have videos to watch. One of the laws, and, and Dr. Rain, I'm sure you'll need to watch this, you won't know anything about it, but requirements are that there is at least a three-minute high-definition ultrasound of a fetus development from fertilization through delivery. So, good, ha- happy watching on that one. And then, um, also some pictures of the same kinds of things that show the development of reproductive organs, brain, heart, liver, et cetera. So, our companies do follow all of those rules, um, and they have shared those materials. Um, and those will be the only materials that will be used to teach human sexuality at school. Um, so I'll ask that next month when we come back, you will have reviewed all of those materials and videos and won't ask for a book report or anything, but if you could, uh, be prepared to either, um, vote to approve those materials or not, then we'll be able to move forward. Um, the other change has to do with the notice that we give parents. Um, we have always used an opt-out form, so if you don't want your child to participate, you need to let us know. Um, it now requires that we have an opt-in and opt-out. So, a notice will go home, parents will have twenty-one days to respond whether the child should opt in or out of this instruction. If they don't respond to anything, we'll send a second notice, they'll have ten days to respond to that. At the, now it'll be thirty-one days, if they've responded in no way, then the child will participate in the instruction. Um, and those will be sent home via parent square for parents to respond.
So, as you can tell, the Senate enrolled Act four forty-two, does require us to make a few changes, both in the way that we communicate with families and enhancing some of the materials that we've used. We did have a, a sit-down meeting with one of the providers, just to ensure that they were up to speed on this. We feel pretty good about moving forward, those links are there for your, your review and certainly we're happy to take any questions about those.
The other change is we have to let the parents know in the notice whether the teacher of the class will be a male or a female and whether the students will be unified or separated into gender, um, alike groups.
So, we'll bring that back to you next month.
Thank you, there's one other item on the preschool, preschool item.
Did have one on that excellent last page.
I'll stay up in case you need me on that one.
Certainly, as we've had conversations about the need in our fam- and the need in our community for preschool, we've told you all along, we've had quite a waitlist this year despite our efforts to open more classrooms. Mrs. Sinceni has been working with those families that, we have sixty-one people on that currently. We're going to go ahead and open two classrooms, additional classrooms, so it'll take us from eight to tens. We'll be able to hopefully have an impact on that waiting list, we'll be reaching out to those families. Again, one at Weston and an additional classroom at J V Stevens next year to take care of that need. I'm happy to take any questions you have about that, but again, the whole goal is to, to better meet that need.
I would be curious that, what our preschool to kindergarten enrollment percentage is. I'm sure it's not a hundred percent just for different things, but maybe for next month, I'd just be curious what that.
Yeah, we, we could certainly pull that.
We can definitely work on that, we keep track of anyone that doesn't return to the district for kindergarten and the reason why, if they'll tell us. So, I can definitely provide that to the team to share.
Just be curious.
The whole goal is we want to make sure that kids are kindergarten-ready to the best of our ability to support that need, thus increasing those, those classrooms. And I do think it has helped us re, uh, attract some students to the corporation, it's certainly our goal to retain them. It's all we have in the instructional report.
Thank you, we'll move on to, uh, construction project updates.
This is pretty small, in terms of what we've provided this week. Unfortunately, I don't have anything new to add in terms of our West property, the Greenfield Center High School project, the West project, the tennis courts. We just had a really wet May and it's been hard to, to get the contractors out here to start moving dirt. We do anticipate that happening here any day. The second piece that we put in.
Behind the scenes, uh, on the tennis courts, we are getting submittals from contractors and, you know, approving, you know, brick samples and asphalt, you, you, all the stuff that has to happen behind the scenes to make it happen. So, it's not like we're doing nothing, we're just not doing anything cool that we can see.
Nothing that you can see anyway.
But, but we're not, so we're not doing the exciting stuff.
Second piece I had there was the agreement, it was childcare facility. As we've continued to work with the city of Greenfield and get our permits, things are progressing really quickly. Those pictures really show you the work that's been done, this was about a week ago, on the exterior. Certainly see a lot, a lot of the windows, the roof work, the sidewalks, the new doors, windows. You're also seeing in those pictures, the, the drywall was delivered and as Mr. Day mentioned to me earlier today, uh, that, that work was done in just a couple of days. So, it is taking shape, should be ready to go by the end of July.
Looks good.
Kind of construction project adjacent and, and didn't think to put it in this report. We have started on, on some painting and some repairs, you know, addressing some needs in the buildings as we move classrooms back, you know, fourth grade classrooms back from the intermediate school to the elementary school, or I guess two. Um, and, and then we also started the moving process tonight.
Thanks.
Happy to take any questions about construction.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, other Frost property.
Okay, this is one on the Frost property that we bought, and I've given you quite a history here. It's just so hard to, to believe that we purchased that in December of twenty eighteen, so six and a half years ago. And certainly, we wrote that contract in a way that allowed the Frost family to, to live there. We do know, as I put in there, uh, Mrs. Frost passed away on June twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four. They had an addendum in that contract that allowed them to, the family to utilize that property for six months and they could request an additional six months. That takes us to June twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five, that's coming up in two weeks. The current contract is moot as to what happens after that point. Chad Frost, who is the executor of the estate, has reached out to, to me to tell me that they would like some additional time as they're trying to, to run some auctions, to remove some things from, from the outbuildings and the house. Did have an opportunity to tour the facility, the facilities that are over there and, and recognize that there are a number of items there. What you're seeing from me is a, a recommendation for the board to take some actions so I, I can communicate to the Frost family. They had asked about the potential to rent some of the, the space from us in this interim period of time. Again, seeing everything that was there, I understand why that might still be a need. I've made a recommendation here to set a rate at five hundred dollars a day while looking at that second point there. I've given them the opportunity to, to waive that fee if they would have everything gone by the end of August. Just doing some simple math there, if they have every, if they're still there on September first, that'd be sixty-six days, that would be a charge of thirty-three thousand dollars. It'd be my recommendation that the board charged that rate for every day after September first as well. Recognizing that we have really no limitations on what we can do on that facility, I would not want to demolish any buildings since they have personal property in there. But in terms of adjustments we may want to make on that property, we've been pretty slow to make some athletic improvements over there, recognizing that the family was there. But there are certainly a lot of foliage, shrubage, trees, fencing, other things that we might want to alter uh, in that interim period of time, obviously working with the family. That's simply a recommendation, technically, the board needs to really authorize Mr. Straw and need to, to move forward with this. Mr. Straw, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
One thing I thought about really, uh, is we probably needed, the board's motion to do this, assuming he would, needs to authorize me to file a claim within estate worth five hundred dollars a day. We can file a claim, we, we have, you know, we have what's necessary to act against the estate if we need to.
Okay, I, we wrote this in such a way that I think was, was very, uh, f- friendly to the family. It's been six and a half years, we've, we've not walked on that property even, uh, real since we, we negotiated that. Uh, I think in, in good faith, I, I'd like to work with them a little bit, but at some point, we're going to need to move forward. We do have some plans to, to do some things on that property.
And it, it's my understanding the buildings remain, not just that we plan to use some of those buildings.
In this interim period, definitely, I mean, we, we've talked about some things we'd like to do on that property in long term. Until that time when we would make some improvements there, we definitely could use the garages, uh, the airplane hangars, when we think about many of the, the groups that we have at the high school, maintenance team, transportation, there are a lot of things we could utilize that space for and, and technically, the board has purchased that.
Yep, can I get a motion to approve the rental rate as proposed and authorize Dr. Owen and Dan Straw to finalize the agreement between Chad Frost and the ex, the executor of the Frost estate and the board? And give authorization to Dan Straw to file a claim with the estate.
I'll make a motion to authorize Mr. Straw to file a claim to the estate as well as approve the rental rate as proposed and give Dr. Owen and Mr. Straw approval to finalize an agreement with the executor of the estate, Chad Frost.
Can I get a second?
All in favor?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Okay, we'll move forward.
Thank you. Onto new business, business information.
Uh, yes, we have two donations this month. The first is for Harrison Elementary School, who received a donation of eight hundred and twenty-five dollars from an anonymous donor for each student to have a snow cone on the last day of school. Uh, the corporation food service department received a donation, donation of five hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents from Friends for Jessica Foundation to cover outstanding student meal account balances at Eden Elementary School and Maxwell Elementary School. I ask that the school board approves the grants and donations as presented, the amount of these opportunities is one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five cents.
Can I get a motion to prove the donations and, as presented, and the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five cents?
I know that, oh, I know that we approved the grants.
Okay, get a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Thank you.
Onto budget twenty twenty-six.
Yes, uh, included in the packet this month is our budget calendar and this is the first step to working through the twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, as you know, there's lots of moving parts and pieces in this. Um, we're going to be doing a lot of work to try to gather the information to keep you guys up to date on what this budget's going to, to, how it's going to change and what it's going to be. I do have one change in the proposed budget, or a proposed calendar, October twenty-second is apparently a Wednesday. Um, so that actually is October twentieth, maybe the Monday after fall break, which is traditionally when we've moved that, moved that October board meeting, so it falls outside of, of break. I have to adjust this in any way that you want, uh, we do have some hard deadlines there at the end of October and November in order to qualify our budget for state approval. Just an informational item for you.
Alright, thank you.
Have we gotten those dates from the state or is that just an assumption based on past years?
No, we, we actually got the budget calendar about two and a half, three weeks ago via email.
I'm always quick to push that over to Mr., uh, Mr. Day to see that we get those in there.
I have nothing else, we'll technology respond. Now the technology responsible use policy.
Yep, that's our, our next one in there. This is one we do on an annual basis, this is to allow us to continue to receive federal dollars. Uh, as I referenced earlier, I did not put the, the board policy A three hundred in the, the board package, so I gave you a hard copy of that, it's one that you had approved in twenty twenty-four. Then the other piece there is, is just some information about LineWise, which is a CIPA-compliant web filter. Working with Mr. Thompson on that, he did put a little bit of a, a summary of what LineWise does. Mr. Thompson, is there anything you want to add about that, no real change?
No real change, same, everything same as last year, we just need approval every year.
So, no questions, that'd be my recommendation.
Yeah, can I get a motion that the board approves the renewal of the CIPA?
Make a motion, we approve the renewal of the CIPA-compliant web filter through one, LineWise.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Onto rest state overnight field trips.
Just have a couple of those, we have the Blue Fusion Dance Team, Coach Kelly Bowman requesting to take the team to Ball State next month, July eighth through the eleventh to the National Dance Alliance Camp. And then from the junior high school cheer team, we have Coach Amanda Shinowski requesting to travel to IU Bloomington July eleventh through thirteenth for the cheer camp. These sponsors understand the expectation we have from overnight field trips, I have no, uh, qualms about making that recommendation.
Any other questions, comments, can I get approval of these overnight field trips as presented?
Make a motion, we approve these field trips as presented.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Onto professional services.
Just giving you a, a, a history really of the work that we've been doing over the last sixteen, seventeen months as we've, we've looked at those three questions. What can we do to have more effective, efficient space for preschool? Looking at, uh, serving our students in grades four through six, is there a better way for us to do that, both during the day, co-curricular and extracurricular? And then that third goal that we've really been pushing out there, are there some operational efficiencies that we can achieve as a corporation? Certainly, we've looked at corporations that are similar to us with forty-two hundred students, you know, having eight schools being pretty unusual. Certainly, our K-three structure was unusual. Couple of months ago, we made the decision to push our fourth grade students back to the elementary schools because, let's face it, we have a lot of space for that. Just looking at where we've been with our enrollment since twenty eleven, we've had a subtle decrease to the point that it's created that. We've looked at the, the support of administrator assistants, Dr. McKibben, higher achievement, and we've had some initial information shared with us from Lancer and Associates. Looking at all that information, we've really come to the conclusion that we feel like we can be more efficient with the use of, of our facilities while also meeting that need for preschool. You're seeing a recommendation from me here to repurpose Weston Elementary School as a, a preschool early childhood center, thus taking us from four elementary schools to, to three. That idea of combining our intermediate schools into one setting, uh, something we feel like we can do as well uh, with the classroom space that we have with just a, a few adjustments. Feel like we can accomplish these three goals, allow us to save well over a million dollars a year in doing that. Personnel costs, not to mention some of the savings on the operations side. What I'm seeking permission this evening is to formalize a relationship with Lancer and Associates that we can, uh, continue to investigate those options, to see, uh, what those costs would be for us. We know what we can realize on the staffing side. Just would like to, to really get a, a closer look at what those fees would be to accomplish those goals that we've talked about in this setting, we've talked about it in our, uh, our work sessions as well. So, just looking for that, that next step.
Any comments or questions for Dr. Owen? Can I get a motion then to approve, there was an authorization of Dr. Owen to enter the professional service contract with Lancer and Associates to create plans for repurpose an existing elementary school or an ear- early childhood center to consolidate the two intermediate schools into one school.
Make a motion to authorize Dr. Owen to enter into that professional contract with Lancer and Associates to start looking at and creating plans to repurpose existing elementary school and looking at combining the two intermediate schools into one.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. To personal matters, contract recommendation, the resignation leaves and retirements.
We have a certified recommendation for Garrett Gieske, Gieske, or Coach G. I'm going to introduce him in, in just a minute. We also have certified resignations from Marissa Combs, Brady Daniels, Andrew Groninger, Victoria Martin, Melinda Penner, Haley Reynolds. It'd be my request that the board approve the personnel report, provide us with the opportunity and hire as needed for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and of course, who we bring those, uh, employees to at the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
I know that we approved the personnel report as presented.
Okay, get a second?
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, say.
We would like to go ahead and make that introduction, Mr. Wallwell.
Thanks, Dr. Owen. Uh, it's my pleasure to introduce Coach G, Garrett Gieske. He's joining us from Crispus Addicts High School. So Garrett is has, his teaching schedule is kind of a unique schedule for us. He's going to have a combination of learning lab and some health and P E sections. And I'm really excited about his special ed background, know that he's uniquely qualified to really help us in the learning lab. So obviously, we mentioned the coaching piece as well. He's going to be a member of Coach Ware's staff, and he's already had a busy summer, busy few weeks here getting things rolling with the new coaching staff. But I'm really thrilled to have Garrett join us, and he was truly the best available educator out there for kind of a unique schedule, so glad to have him with us.
Welcome aboard.
That was it this evening?
On to recommendations for cancellations.
I do have a cancellation of a teacher contract to recommend to for Marty Dudley, and I've put the the dates in there when that was delivered. No meeting was requested, and so I'm asking you to move forward with that cancellation this evening.
Yeah, can I get a recommenda- or a motion to cancel the teacher contract of Marty Dudley?
Make a motion to cancel the teaching contract to Marty Dudley effective the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five contract.
Can I get a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, say. Thank you, Dirk. You have anything else?
No other business for you this evening?
On to important dates, regular school board meeting Monday, July fourteenth here. Future topic agenda, it would be the Health Service Annual Report. We don't have anything else. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.